Okay. So, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Review and approve the agenda. So, I wanna tweak the agenda a little bit. We got cut out of our last meeting, so I want to add personnel, and I wanna add that before guests. So, I'll, I'll wait for our motion to do that, if everybody would like.
How about legal, too? Are we moving that there?
Oh, you're right, thank you. I forgot that it was twofold.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move that right there. So, if everybody's okay.
Executive session, you mean?
Yes. So, we didn't get, right. We didn't get to come out of executive session and do anything because Zoom just shut down. So, we're gonna move those two things before guests. All right. So, if everybody's okay with that, I'll accept an emo- ah, an emotion.
Should we also, uh, change the agenda to take Jeremy Carroll off?
Oh, yes, thank you. Forgot about him.
So, we moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Review of the March 22 regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Review of the March 29 special meeting minutes.
Move to approve as written.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Review of the March 29 dog hearing minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All, aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Motion passes. Open public comment. Is there any open public comment? All right. So, we'll go to personnel, and so, before I take any comment, I'm going to make a statement. So, our town manager resigned effective immediately on Saturday. He felt that the position was not a right fit for him and his family. And so, we talked about that in executive session. Select Board wishes him well on his future endeavors. So, after that being said, I'll accept a motion on the personnel matter.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And then, the second motion for personnel?
Um, I make a motion to contact Stan Wilbur to fill in temporarily as the town manager with terms to be decided with him.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Now, as far as a legal matter?
I make a motion to search and secure an attorney for pending dog issues.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. So, the next is Beaver Pond Committee. Go ahead, Dale.
Dale's muted, I think.
There he goes. He's got it.
So, I just wanted to, I can skip the introduction. I think everybody knows me. So, I just wanted to have a conversation with everybody about expectations as the number one priority. Um, expectations of me as a chair and what you all expect of the committee or a board. What our responsibilities will be, homework assignments, whatever. Just looking for some general feedback.
So, on our agenda later in the meeting, we do have a part about committees and to make some decisions on that. We'll see if we get to that tonight. Dale and I did have a conversation. So, does anybody have any input on the Pond Committee?
I think if you're speak, speaking to Stan, he has a notebook about committees. And maybe that would be helpful. He used to give it out to everyone when you were on a committee, like if you were the chair or a member. And these were the expectations of just committees in general. So, maybe if you contact him, he could point you in the direction of that book. I think that'd be helpful probably for every single committee, I think.
Yes, agreed. And that is one of the things that I will discuss with Stan when I talk with him and meet with him this week. I'm not sure that that binder is a, is there anymore. But if it's not, I'm sure Stan can make it again. Do you have any, like, direct questions, Dale? I mean, I'm okay with everything that the Pond Committee is doing. What is the input of other board members?
I think it's great. I think I've had feedback from people going down there and other people abusing it. Like dumping their car ashtrays out into the parking lot or breaking chairs and leaving them and stuff. So, um, but I think it's being used, and I think it looks great. I mean, I think the Pond is one of our best assets in town, so.
Agreed.
Yeah. Anything I've seen on Facebook or anywhere else was always positive and appreciative of what the Beaver Pond Committee is doing.
Did you see my cloud picture? I took a picture at the pond the other day, and it was amazing. I took a picture, I was standing right at the pond, looking at the water and the clouds in the sky just, it looked like I was looking up at the sky and taking a picture instead. It was so blue and the clouds are so white. It was like freaky, but a lot of lights.
I like that.
I think we ought to kinda send a letter to Ray and thank him for sharing it, but I know he's, wants to stay on and, and help with some of the programs. But I think he's due a, uh, thank you letter for all his years as chair.
Are you looking for the Select Board to send that letter or the Pond?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And, um, Tim and I think Jim and Chance went and cut that tree that was leaning across the trail tonight. Just so you know, it got taken care of. All right. Do you have any other questions, Dale, or?
Um, no, not really. I mean, I think the board has been, or the committee has been kind of relaxed, and I certainly have a pretty good understanding of open meeting laws and all that. I mean, the, the book sounds great, Lisa, thank you for the suggestion. That will be a good read if I can get a copy. I, I think will, will be good. I think, um, I have a good understanding. I did talk to a person tonight about getting a quote on the two dead trees by the shore. And once I get that in writing, I can present it to the board, the Select Board. And I presume that's proper chain of command.
Yes. Well, I'm very excited that you've decided to take that position. It should be a, a great year.
Yeah.
You always have a good time.
Yeah. Ray, Ray did a, I mean, amazing job, and Bruce is right. I mean, he deserves a lot of thanks. And I think it's come a long ways, and it's not quite on autopilot, but I think it's gonna cruise along. I think that I personally don't have all the strengths and abilities that maybe is gonna be required for all aspects of this role. But I'll do what I can. And certainly, um, do the minimum of what's expected and, and report to everybody and try to keep everybody informed of what's going on. And, and when in doubt, I will contact the board or the chair. And thanks to you, Carrie. I mean, the, the call the other day was great. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. It was a good call. It's pretty informative on both parts. All right. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Proctor Youth League.
So, we would like to put no smoking, no tobacco signs at the youth league fields. And what's been prior policy, I'll say, with Stan, when we put up the no dog signs, was to come to this luck board and just, um, ask for permission and let you know, we buy our signs. We bought the other signs that we put up. We would buy these signs. It is municipal property, and so I think by, you're not supposed to smoke, I mean, it's for property. But, um, just to let you know that that is what we'd like to do before our season begins. So, we have, uh, last year, we had a couple issues primarily from people from out of town. So, it's just nice if the signs are up, it's a lot easier to point to the sign than just say, well, you're just saying that it's not posted, so.
I'm in favor of that.
Sounds good.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
All right. No, if you're fine with that. I just, Stan always wanted us to come and, and just, uh, speak to the board about what we're doing, because we're doing it on town property. And, uh, so, no, we'll just go forward and buy the signs and post them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is good stuff. And I think almost the entire town knows about the good stuff. But I'll let somebody announce the good stuff so that I don't mess up which championship it is.
So, Lisa, go ahead.
Back to back, uh, to Pete, the, you have to have a separate qualifier for each team. So, for boys and girls, it was kind of a rough row because, um, you know, girls didn't get to play, other teams got taken out through no fault of their own. And it made it another really difficult kind of finals for basketball. So, hopefully next year, I think we said it last year, about this year, we thought it would be better. But it was pretty impressive that, um, when you think about Corey Valley, that we had, um, teams from each high school, either in finals or semifinals, um, from, you know, all three of our schools. The boys game, if you happened to watch that or listen to it, was pretty fascinating. A, a one-point game, and it certainly, you know, two more clicks on the clock, and it probably would have gone the other way. So, um, it was a nail brighter, nail biter right to the end. And this past weekend, on Saturday, we had the celebration down at PYL. It was the parade. We're grateful to the fire department for leading that. And, uh, it really was, everyone I've heard from at the barbecue and then today has talked about how great the parade was. It must have, Kevin must have taken you, taken them up and down every single street, because I don't think anybody missed it. So, that was, um, exciting. We had a spectacular turnout. It was a wonderful day. I think Megan said it almost seemed like we had a love sense of normalcy down there that people were, you know, kind of congregating in your own pod, eating, even though we had our masks on, kids are playing kickball, um, you know, taking pictures, just kind of hanging out like we used to do. Big shout out to Franklin's for the wings. I mean, if, if you host anything with teenagers, make sure you get wings from Franklin's, because those go like hotcakes. But thanks to Frank for, for supporting us with those. Yeah. It was just, uh, you know, a great time, and it's nice to do anything we can in town to celebrate all of our kids. And I think do a parade like that, it makes everyone in the community like, uh, you, you're part of the celebration, so.
Awesome.
That's a weather cooperated with you, so it was a perfect day.
It was a perfect day, and I, I'd actually like to make a motion to acknowledge both the boys and the girls championship teams officially.
Second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. What would you like to do with that, Ben?
I can tell them on the, uh, morning announcements on Monday.
Okay. Like, um, they're not in school. All right.
A week from Monday.
We could print up like certificates that say the Proctor Select Board members recognize, you know, the men's basketball team and the women's basketball team for the championships for 2021.
That sounds awesome.
Okay.
I can do that.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Okay. Just remind you. All right. So, next on our list is the Highway Department Report. There is nobody here to speak to the Highway Department Report, so does anybody have any input that they would like me to further investigate or check into on the highway?
No.
Okay. So, the same thing is gonna happen with the Board of Water and Sewer. What would you guys like to do? Would you like to go into the Board of Commissioners and the, for each? Or would you just like to table that till the next meeting?
I say we table it, I'm sorry, head, sorry, Tom. And invite John to speak to them, so we have some feedback on it.
That'd be perfect.
I agree.
Okay. Standing Committee Reports. A Planning Commission. The minutes are in the packet, um, but we don't usually read them. That's just for us. However, um, I did receive Ray Beatt's resignation. And I did receive an email from Dick Horner. And actually, the whole board received both those things. And the whole board received the letter of interest from Carol Provinsky. And what is the board's pleasure?
I'm glad when anybody steps up and volunteers.
All right. So, do we want to make it a, a motion to appoint her to the Planning Commission at this meeting?
I think that's what we're supposed to.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So, I'm also going to table the review of the committee structure pending my conversation with Stan and seeing if I can find that binder tomorrow when I go into the office. Okay. So, review bills and sign the Select Board orders. So, since COVID is, it's still there, but I would like everybody to go back to signing the orders. I think it's important that now that we're in a different position in the state, that we make our presence at the town office on a, at least bi-weekly basis. So, what do you think?
I agree.
I'm fine.
All right. So, with that being said, um, can I have a motion to accept them?
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, everyone will stop into the office and sign, check in. That would be great. Thank you. So, I did the Planning Commission appointment at the standing committees. The real rutland.com website. I do not like the write-up that was submitted to us. I would like to propose that we have a five-person committee to get together and pull that together. And, um, I, I would like to ask Lisa, Judy, Linda Doty, and Megan Canucci to help write that with me. And so, what does the board think?
Sounds fine.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. So, I will contact the, everybody, and we'll get together, and we'll get that done and submit it for the board's approval for next meeting. You think we can do it by next meeting, Lisa?
Sure. Oh.
Okay. I'm writing this down. Okay. The drone flyover request. Now, there's a first. What's everybody's thought on the drone flyover request?
Is this something like jumbo, jumbo drone or something that's gonna like impact us? Do they need that?
I, I don't know. I don't know if it's just making us aware. I don't know as he, I've never had anybody.
You do. Like, that it's your knowledge. Uh, like, when Mr. Oakman wants to do it, you have to give them permission to fly over.
You do.
Yeah. We do down there.
So, how about the racing people around town that just fly over and take pictures?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. But I know that, that we do down there. So, maybe because he's doing it for something specific. He's doing a recording or pictures or something, isn't he?
Right. I'm fine with it.
Anybody who wants to fly over town, why not?
Plane, helicopter, drone, however they wanna do it.
Exactly. So, I'm also, do we need a motion for that, or can we just give him permission?
I think, permission? I don't know.
All right. Well, let's just do a motion, so we cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I object.
Okay. Technical needs for the Select Board, I think this is ongoing. So, does anybody have an issue with us not touching base on that because we're in transition?
I, I just hope we're moving forward, because I would really like to get back to face-to-face meetings here.
Well, here's the question. After May 1st, is there any reason that we can't be in person?
I say we would probably have to look into it.
I mean, if, if his order doesn't change and he allows like gatherings, I say go for it.
I mean, if up to 150, if I'm reading it right.
Depending on how many have the vaccination, I believe.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Lisa's muted. I don't know if she's talking to us.
150 is outside.
Yeah.
That's what it says, not, not that you could get 150 in the building.
Is it still 25% capacity indoors?
Yeah. So, I think the only thing you'd have to worry about is how you would have public participate. So, you'd still need some kind of technology.
Right. And that's what we've been talking about. And I told you, the person that I knew is, he's been traveling all the time. So, um, there would be willing to go in with anybody that's there to talk about, you know, the soundboards because of the sound so, being so poor in there and putting up a big, giant TV screens, and we each have our own mics, so we could still, we could all easily meet there together. And then, we still allow Zoom to the public. I think we should try for that as quick as we can.
I agree.
You're not gonna let the public in, then?
Well, you could, you'd only could allow so many in, and it'd be hard to monitor. You know, like, I hate to have them come and say, we're at capacity, go home and turn on your computer. So, I don't know if we would just be initially together and then just Zoom to the public.
Yeah. I think you'd have a problem with, uh, letting, uh, the, the public in and somebody not wanting. We need a policy or, or something, or discussion. If you're gonna let somebody unvaccinated to come in, you, uh, you have a problem with that.
Gradually start then, just say the Select Board is meeting in person, and public will attend by Zoom only.
Yeah.
Right?
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I thought we were working towards.
I say go for it. I mean, all we need is the technology, and we can do it now.
Right. We just need the technology, and we need the proper technology.
Right. So, I'll keep on that and try to get a deadline, hopefully maybe in the next couple weeks.
Carrie, do we have a, do we have a technician coming over for our computers, our office?
So, I did call Vermont Digital today, and they will be calling me back probably tomorrow morning. I'm gonna try to schedule them to come Tuesday and Wednesday to secure our digital.
They might, they might have some information on this, how to set up a Zoom for us. I believe that's what they do.
All right. And my agenda ends there.
The backside.
Yeah. I must not have printed it or something.
Okay. I thought you meant you're done.
The budget report is next.
Right. Does anybody have any questions on the budget that I can get answered?
I'm fine.
No.
Okay. What's after the budget?
Sheriff's report.
Anybody have any questions on the sheriffs?
No.
I found it was interesting when we had the parade that the state police were the ones in the parade instead of a sheriff.
That is interesting.
I mean, I just, I, I thought it was nice, but I was just like used to sheriffs being, it's like, wow, we get the state police for this one.
And no sheriff.
Yeah. That must have been Kevin that organized that, so.
Yeah. It was nice that he was there.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Other newer old business?
So, I do have some new business. On Friday, I received a call from Megan Canucci. And the dogs that we had ordered to be muzzled and confined were out loose and attacked her dog in its own yard. The sheriff was called. I did send out the sheriff's report and the pictures. However, the investigation won't be final because the sheriff that it got moved to, Riley, is on vacation for the week. So, um, I think we need to discuss what will happen, because I'm not, I'm not even sure we need another dog hearing, because we, the dogs were supposed to be muzzled and confined, and we did go check out that yard. The sheriff tried to ticket, and they would not enter the door. So, what's your pleasure? Do you want to wait? My only problem with waiting is them getting loose again.
Now, I say that we, um, they just assign another sheriff to it. I think it's gotta be dealt with sooner rather than later, because if these dogs keep running loose, and, and I've seen, you know, it, it's like they, someone said that they saw them drive away the other day with the dogs and come back without the dogs. So, I don't know if they took them someplace or just are keeping them temporarily, so they, people don't think they have them or what. But I think we need a sheriff to go there to find out what's going on, and then I think they need to be taken away.
And let's also clarify that these are dogs that we talked about months ago.
Yeah.
Not the most recent hearing.
Less than a year ago, yes.
Yeah.
Well, this is the third time. Well, this is the third time for these dogs. I also, I think that I would really like to consider an animal control officer. The dog issue in town is out of control. It just, they're, they're running around all the time. There's dog poop everywhere. This is our second attack this year. So I have some major concerns about that, and the sheriff, this is not what the sheriff wants to do or spend time on. So I think we're really needing to discuss what we're going to do about it.
Let's advertise for animal control officer.
So we would have to, when, when we get somebody, that we have to also have a budget for that. So we'll have to start with that, but I would like to pursue that and see where we're at. What do you all think?
But would anybody mind if I called a couple of other towns? I mean, that can't be a full-time job for somebody, so I wonder if we could.
Brandon just, Brandon went through that last year, was it the year before, and they just got rid of theirs and got a different person, so.
Well, you, you know, you'd have to get the right person for the job.
Right, and I don't know if it's, if, I believe it's a part-time position.
Yeah.
Ask call on a call basis or something, I don't know.
Somebody out of town might be good, you know.
But I think a lot of people now are nervous to go around that neighborhood and walk their kids or their dogs because of these dogs. And the others don't seem to care really, so.
Well, even in my neighborhood, in the last two weeks, three loose dogs, three. People aren't registering their dogs. I've just, how do we get people to? I mean, everybody wants the town to do something, but that means everybody has to follow the rules as well. So it's, we need enforcement of the rules, and I just don't think that the sheriff's department is in a position to be able to do that. Nor do they want to do it, no.
Oh, they don't want to do it, no. No.
And.
Who does animal control in the city?
They have an animal control officer. Tim does it. He's been there for quite a while.
Is he a police officer?
Yes. He's sworn, he's sworn in. I believe.
So you want an extra hours?
Um, I don't. I would go, I would try to seek out someone else. Just because, I don't know. I think it's something that's, you know, just certain occasions, but we want somebody who's gonna, not gonna be, you know, who's gonna be willing to go up to someone's doorstep continuously and knock on the door and say, hey, listen.
Sure.
And it is true, it's a lot of them, even the, you know, any other towns, sheriffs don't, it's not what they want to do, so.
Even town police don't want to do it, and we, we need to be more proactive and, and get this under control.
Yeah.
Before somebody gets hurt.
Oh, did you say we don't have a police officer for a week?
No, Riley is on vacation for a week. And so Tarbell was the one who responded to the call, but he doesn't have the same rank, if I'm saying that right, as Riley. So he reports to Riley, and Riley is on vacation and won't be back till next Monday.
And I think they assigned Riley, because he was doing the other one, correct?
I think Riley's been getting a lot of them, according to Riley. So I can call them back tomorrow and tell them that, no, you know, I'll, I'll call and I'll ask for Carter. And I'll see if I can get this resolved so that we can move on with this. Tom, can you look into the other parts of getting an animal control officer?
I'll, I'll call around and see what the other towns are going on and see if we can get somebody, yeah.
All right, and do you want to put this on the next agenda?
Please, yes, we, we need this, you know.
But we need to schedule a hearing like sooner rather than later, because you have so many hours to.
So Ben and I checked the ordinance, and, and it's after the investigation closes, we have seven days. So the investigation won't close until.
Oh, so he gets back?
Or I get another officer on it. So I'm gonna try to get another officer on it. And I'm gonna also see where we're at with those tickets. And then we have seven days from when we get the officer's report.
Could someone call Megan and tell her we're working on this, you know, sometimes.
I gotta see her on Wednesday, but I can tell her tomorrow.
I, I spoke with Megan today, because she reached out to me again today, so she knows that I'm on it. And she also knew that I was on hold with the sheriff for quite some time today, like almost my entire lunch. So she, she knows.
Okay, good.
Sounds good.
All right, is there anything else?
Yes, we have. I think it can wait, but I just want to make sure the South Street sidewalk project here, we have a engineering request for proposal. Put that off till next meeting. That's fine with me.
Okay.
That's what I was going, King?
Boys and King, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It can, do you think we can do that?
I think so. If we can't, then I will let you know.
Thank you.
And I'll make sure everybody's onto that. And the, the path, the shared use path, did everybody see that? Beaver Pond Shared Use Path? Because what I actually asked him was to provide us how much we've already spent on this project, which, you know, the question is, do we continue with this project? Because we're gonna talk another 150,000, I think, at least on this project.
Oh, wow.
And I did talk to Frank. Greg never did reach out to him and talk to him. And Frank actually called him back a couple of times and never spoke to him. So I actually spoke to him, and he said that, you know, he, the way they were gonna move it seemed fine, but he was actually, he wouldn't mind if the project went away. He definitely doesn't want to go in through his property. They never came and talked to him originally and asked him, you know, about putting it right through the middle of his property, so. And I, my concern was just the cost going up between contamination and redesign. Because we know what that costs with the town office every time they went back to redesign something.
Could we, can we put this off till, I'd like Stan's input on this a little bit, too. That, you know, he, he has been on board since the start there. And I don't think a week will hurt.
Two weeks for the next meeting, you mean?
Yeah, two. That's kind of why I waited, because we haven't really said we're going to do it yet either. We're not at that, that point, but I did want it on here, because we've spent a lot of money. I don't know if Greg did even provide that, but I believe it's like, have we spent 90,000 on that? I think already, and we haven't even started breaking ground. That's a lot. So I have concerns about that. So we can discuss that, I mean, make a mark that we're gonna put that on.
You're muted, Carrie.
Yeah, I was writing, that's why. It's a little desk.
You know, I didn't want us to hear her write.
It's, is there anything else?
I love to do what you earned.
Second.
Wait, are you gonna put Jeremy down for two weeks, then?
I already did, and.
Yep.
And can you send me his contact information so that I can be sure to get us the materials?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we adjourned?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.